All right. Presentation from Uba City Police Department. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Homeless liaison officer Troy Koski is going to give a presentation today on the current update for the different things that have been happening in the community. And his only ask is that if you guys have questions, don't save them until the end. Ask them as they go through, and that way you guys make sure you cover everything you want to do. He's got about 10 minutes, four slides, so however long you guys want to go with the questions, it's totally up to you. This is Officer Troy Koski. I think you've met him once.
Yeah. All right. So I do have a lot of information. As the position that you created almost a year ago, so I've tried to condense that year down to about 10 minutes. So any questions that you do have, please ask away. Get my notes here so I don't forget. The first thing that I tried to do was assess the homeless in the city and where they were living. Tried to find out who the homeless were and what made them homeless. Then I tried to identify the problematic areas where they liked to hang out. Areas that they liked to frequent, had cover, and food, and panhandling as their primary way to make money. Also had folks that were living in RVs and vehicles, and they would park those vehicles in the boat ramp, Second Street, large parking lots, and also in cul-de-sacs that were out of the way trying to hide. They moved around quite a bit when their vehicles did run. A lot of those areas needed consistent and frequent patrol and work. I found out that the homeless liked to stay in certain geographical areas, much like they had a neighborhood. Because most of them were walking, and they would push carts or with all their gear, they tried to stay in main, kind of like neighborhoods that they'd stay. Some of those areas were the boat ramp, Second Street area, Queens and Live Oak, the Sinclair gas station, the east end of Linway, the Walmart, Home Depot, Lowe's, and Farp area. And there's a group that liked to stay in Winco, Cinemark, the Quick Stop on Bridge, and then the Colusa Corridor. Again, all of those areas provided them the ability to either have shelter, food, or panhandling to make money. They call it flying a sign. You see those folks are out there. I saw that many of these areas were both private and public that they were staying on. So I read the Boise versus Martin decision to make sure that I wasn't violating that case law or any other civil rights. I found the many of the codes, the penal code and the municipal code, that I could use to enforce for camping and trespassing on private property. Then I looked at outreach versus enforcement. What was the best tool for what needed to happen? I tried to find out what the needs were for the homeless, and if I could provide outreach to fill that need, to help move them from homelessness. Recently, the Hart team allowed one of their members to go out. We started going out on a regular weekly basis. I'd go out with the Hart team, someone from Hands of Hope, and also the street nurse to go out and try and provide outreach for what their needs were. Because we found that they weren't really wanting to go in to get the services. These are the chronic homeless that we have, that a lot of us see. Outreach and assistance was provided on every contact that I made. I always prefaced, "How can I help you? What can I do to get you from living on the streets?" Through that outreach with those different entities, several people were actually housed in shelters and then no longer living on the streets. We do have several areas now in the Uba Sutter area for them to stay. The most recent is the safe overnight tent camping area that's on Second Street. They're allowed to go there from 6:00 to 8:00 in the morning. They've leveled that area that's just south of the airport by the Public Shooting Range or the Rod and Gun Club down there. They have pallets out there with plywood on them. They have bathrooms and hand washing stations. Trying to get folks to use it. They're a little bit resistant to it for some reason. We have the Better Way on Live Oak Boulevard, Project Home Key, the hotel that was recently purchased, that's in the process of becoming available. And we have Project Room Key, which was for folks that are 65 and older or have severe medical conditions. The Life Building Center in Marysville was recently updated, and they're allowed to stay there as well. They have 25 different rooms, and they're able to stay there at night. The newest one will be the New Haven Court Project, which is on Percy and Garden. Should be hopefully open April, is what they're talking about. Then I started meeting with the property owners, business owners, and employees, trying to reduce the homelessness on their properties. We talked about cleaning up the debris that's left by the homeless, and basically so that another person would not come along and either make a mess of that or use that to build their own camp. Different lighting options, and the big one was trimming the shrubs and the trees so they could not hide. It's amazing how they can hide. We've got some before and after photos here in a minute. And then fencing. For the folks that didn't want to take the outreach, then I looked at the enforcement end of it, met with the misdemeanor district attorney team to discuss the different codes that we could use, again, that wouldn't violate the Boise decision, and how would be best for us to document those cases when they went to court. Part of that was to contact the business owners and have them sign trespass authorization forms that we could have on file, so that if there was an issue at night when they weren't available, we could handle it. I took all that information, provided it to our officers in briefing trainings, so that they were also aware and could be part of that, so it wasn't just myself that was out there for the enforcement part of it. And then for networking, there are so many different public agencies and private nonprofit law enforcement that are collaborating, trying to change homelessness. I attend many of those different meetings to represent the city, to try to reduce the homelessness in the Sutter Uba area. One of the things that I found was trying to get more direct communication with the citizens. So I met with George Barlow and the YC 311 app. He added the illegal camping and vagrancy to the service requests, and those come directly to me for a much quicker response. Working closely with other city departments has been key in cleaning up the amount of debris that's left. Eric Ball at Code Enforcement and the entire Code Enforcement or Public Works team have been tremendous impact in cleaning up the things that's left by the homeless. Even on the hottest days in summer, they're always there with their tractors and dump trucks. Many of the areas, like the boat ramp, were reoccurring because people would move, come and go, and that's where I tried to get the public to be my eyes and ears, because it was tough to be able to make my loop and try to get on those things before they got out of hand. I have some other items that I'm researching right now that might assist in helping reduce the calls for service and involvement in homeless and trespassing. Those are some things that I'm working on that hopefully we can get to soon. And then I have some before and after photos. This is the area at the dead end of Market Street. This is a private property. A lot of these folks were living on this property for probably two years. We worked at trying to get them out of there. He's actually now leasing this property. He's able to use this property again because we were able to move these folks out of here. This is that same property behind A&amp;A Concrete. This was the house that was just across the street from Winco. Eric Ball was key in working with the owner to get this removed. This was actually the south side of the on-ramp to the 10th Street Bridge going into Marysville. This was approximately 50-foot camp that popped up. And then we got in and cleaned that out of there. This is the dead end of Linway, another area where they seemed to frequent because of the access to the levee. And this is A Street at Plumas. Public Works has, again, cleaned this up on multiple occasions. They finally, we just took the trees out. They don't stay there anymore, or the bushes. We had several encampments along the levee behind the district attorney's office on Second Street, and this is probably the first time that we really went out and did outreach, tried to move these folks into shelters. They'd been living down here for a while. And it's still vacant. They haven't, they're not moving back in. Again, that's part of that consistent checking and patrol. Again, this is part of the removing bushes. When you looked at this from the front side, you couldn't see the camp in there, and the owner decided just to take the bushes out, and they don't camp there any longer. This is behind Sierra Central on Harder Parkway. So again, kind of reduced that year into 10 or 15 minutes. Do you have any questions or any suggestions?
Through the mayor. First, thanks, Chief. We had made this request to get an update on the homeless, and Officer Koski, just proud of the work that you had to do and have done and will continue to do. I don't think, part of the reason in the request was just to shine a light on the good stuff that you guys are doing, and that includes the whole PD. I know that everyone has a piece of this, but you're the tip of the spear, if you will, and the stuff that you've been able to accomplish. I think you're in an unenviable position in regards to the fact that no matter what you do, it's never going to be probably enough for some people, but I want you to know that I know that you're working hard, and again, law enforcement, our local law enforcement, Uba City PD is doing the same. I guess the question I have is, when we're, you know, we try to relocate those folks who have found themselves in a situation where they aren't with a home, and of course now we're into tough weathers, what, if you had to give us one or two things that we as a council could support, continue to support your efforts, are there two priorities? Are there two things that perhaps come out that you have seen?
I would, I see that many of our homeless suffer from malnourishment. Many people would say that they're, if you want to say lazy, but they don't get real consistent food on a regular basis. They have to find their food. And their addiction to either alcohol or drugs. And then mental health comes into that, and it depends on which comes first. They usually typically have both. The drugs could bring on the mental health issues, or the mental health makes them use the drugs. They don't like the way the mental health medication makes them feel, so they'll use drugs.
I know in previous conversations that drug addiction or alcohol issues are a big contributor. Are there enough local resources to help those folks, or is that an area that continues to need some support?
There are. Actually, just last week, Dr. Mark Sluschemeyer, I believe is his name, has a program that he's got a goal to get 30 people into. They have money or a grant for residential treatment. The tough part is getting these people to agree that they have an addiction problem and to get them to go in. I have many that say, yes, they want to go. I've had few that have actually followed through with the program, either it be the methadone program that they can get. And then a health hospital also has a program for the Suboxone that's a little different than the methadone. They say that's a little different program that may help better. And then this program that is now available through, apparently it's through the end of the year. And I've got, I talked to a couple of people today that say, yes, they're interested, and so I'm going to put them in contact to hopefully start that process.
Again, thanks for the presentation. I hope the public that is concerned about whether there are any efforts going on in the city of Uba City take the time to perhaps listen to this and see that there are efforts being undertaken, and thank you individually for your effort. Thank you, Chief, and the other members of the audience in law enforcement and Uba City PD, because I know it's a daily thing. I know it's a daily thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Troy, thank you for everything you've done. I'm going to follow the vice mayor's comments in one year. You've done a lot of work, and thank you. I want to thank you very much for that. And the only question I have for you is, is I'm pretty much, you know, involved with the homeless issues also, trying to help. Homeless Planning Commission, Committee, Homeless Planning Committee, where's that at that you had on there? I've never heard of that.
It's probably one of the things that I've read. I've read so many different things.
Okay, all right.
I've read the five-year strategic plan that was developed.
That's probably from Sutter County's then, when they did theirs four years ago then. Okay, I was just wondering, it's like...
All those different articles that I've read, trying to see where the direction, that's what I want to do, is want to make sure that I went in the direction that you guys had already set forward.
Okay, thank you. And also, Police Department, all of the employees, Chief, thank you all for what you do. Makes our town safe and a place people want to come and live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Troy, I am just amazed, seriously. When you, before taking office, I don't know, you had, you've always had this desire to help people. And Chief, I think he pretty much volunteered, or how, or was it voluntold? No, it was a volunteer, right? Tested, right? And what an amazing amount of work that you, along with your peers, Public Works, Code Enforcement, the feedback that I receive on the other end, always very positive about your work. It's, you know, everyone knows you, which is really, really valuable. Your method of interacting with people, the homeless know you in a positive way. I mean, and when you're having to be difficult or, you know, challenging to them, they sense the respect you have from them and vice versa. Out of all the, the new program, the Hart program, it's not completely like all there yet together, right, with all the teams and...
COVID really threw a loop for that, and that's what delayed the response for them being able to come out. They didn't want them to come out, and it's been a couple of months since they've allowed their outreach person to come along.
So bringing up COVID within the homeless population, how many, do you know if it's been as prevalent?
It's very few. They, the Health Department has trailers that are at the fairgrounds. I think they have 20 now, and to my knowledge, there's only been three or four that have actually had to quarantine in the trailers. And that's including the, I think a couple of them came from Better Way. So they've done a great job. I went up there and provided some training for the participants on trying to be COVID-safe. Email was great, trying to get that going, so it hasn't been as bad as I think they thought it was going to be for the homeless.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of concern, I think, early on, right? And surprisingly, knock on wood, you know, things are going pretty well in that vulnerable community. How is the, how's the response by our local business owners and private community? Because I know, I know, we got some testimonial here, but I also, sometimes I get constituents email me pictures and text me things and, you know, what is the city doing?
It's been great. In fact, Sandy invited me to come do a presentation. We did a presentation for the Downtown Business Association. And again, the main thing is trying to get everyone to be my eyes and ears and let me know right away when something's happening, so then I can take action instead of waiting for, to be a larger problem that makes it more difficult to try and tackle.
The areas that I've heard from our community is the area where that Dollar Store, McDonald's, next to the...
Perfect Storm.
Okay, so I didn't see any pictures, and I was hoping to see a picture.
I had so many pictures.
Where are you at with that one? Because I haven't been...
That is, there's, that has been cleaned up multiple times, and the problem with that is, again, it's the Perfect Storm. People actually drive by and they will leave mattresses, food. I was by there yesterday, and somebody left 10 boxes of teas and food for the homeless. So that's the other part of the problem, is that that's why they hang out there, is because there's McDonald's right there and the Dollar Store, and people do feel bad. They'll come out, and they just give them those things. I've actually seen people drop off McDonald's, and they just throw it to the side because they said, "We've already got too many meals. We're full. We can't eat it." And there was a new manager that has taken over recently in the last couple of weeks, and he's been very proactive working with me to try and keep that area cleaned up. So when I move them out, then I request that the business owner go in and clean that area out, again, so it doesn't look like it's, doesn't make it as inviting for them to come back.
And so that, so then on the Winco side, because that's the other part, I get calls from Winco and then Second Street, the housing there, but with the Winco area is, because that's cleaned up, so there's less transients or, you know...
There are. The Winco area with that house being gone, there are some that still sleep around the backside, some that do sleep out in that field. Again, I try to keep that down. There've been a couple of fires out there that have been started. The Fire Department had to go out and put out, but it has reduced dramatically since that house was taken down.
Well, I'm really thoroughly impressed, and any way that we can help you, you know, as a city council, I don't know if we need more than one Troy. I don't know, Chief, you know, to help him out, because when you're off, it's then try to catch up, right? Or how does that work for you?
Well, actually, I work with the sergeants there on graveyard and talk to them, so that it's not just me. Again, it's the whole department, and that's why I hold the briefing trainings. I've got them all a cheat sheet so they know the, kind of the main ordinances that are available that they can use at their disposal, so it can be easy for them to either, to write citations or so they know they have the right to move people along.
Well, the example of the work that you're doing along with the leadership of our fire chief, this is a really good model of example of how to work within homeless community and also utilize the networking. So you're doing a multi-tier system of service, and that's pretty impressive, and I thank you so much. I mean, seriously, I want to have tears in my eyes at this moment because I'm so proud of the work that you're doing for our community. So thank you so much, and thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Through the mayor. Officer Koski, thank you for the work that you've been doing. I've had the pleasure, or the unfortunate pleasure, of having to call you because of our homeless issues around here, but just want to share with the chief and the executive team of PD who's here tonight that you are doing a fabulous job. There's proof in the job that you're doing because it's creating another problem. And so that's, I'm going to have a question for Chief Landon here in just a second to see what we can do on that. But you've been great for outreach. We just recently had a problem, and I was quite surprised when you came to my office for follow-up yesterday and because of an issue that we had over at our office with a homeless person. And I just want to say thank you. I know you're one person, and you're having tremendous impact, and so many, many thanks there. But Chief, can I ask a question of you? Because we're making inroads, and Officer Koski's already mentioned a couple of things there that we have to educate our public, because as good-hearted as our public is, they're enabling the homeless when they keep giving them food outside of the system that we should be trying to get them affiliated with to solve the homeless problem. The reason I know that we've created an additional problem is because we've got them out of the river bottoms, we got them out from behind Dollar, the Dollar Store and all these other places, and we're starting to see them all over town in places that you wouldn't see them. In the last six months, I've had more issues in my business complex that we've had to call PD. Some of the, the recent one was pretty scary, as far as my staff was concerned, what happened. What do we need to do for PD? Because I see the strain, and I'm not saying you guys didn't. It was great. Officer showed up, follow-up, follow-up with Officer Koski, but I see this secondary problem coming, because they were isolated in these areas, but now we're moving them into other areas, and it's a real problem for our business owners. I mean, DBA has talked about it. They've had problems down on Plumas Street. I'm clear on the west end of town, the particular transit that was involved in ours, in three days, was everywhere from around Live Oak Boulevard to South End near Lincoln to my complex out on the other side of Stabler. And it's a real problem. How are we going to, you know, combat this? Because I know you guys are already stressed trying to deal with everything else. Is there something that we can define as a need that would help us combat this? Because I just see this becoming a bigger problem. The more work that Officer Koski does, working with all the auxiliary offices to clean things up, it's impacting us. It's impacting my business, it's impacting other businesses. What are we going to do? And do you have any ideas on what we can do as a council to help you, help us, help everybody else?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, first of all, it's not a Uba City problem, so we have to understand that. That is not a California problem, it's a nationwide problem. So we are so much further ahead, having just been up to Eugene, having just been up to Portland in the past couple of weeks, and seeing where they've intruded upon and where Boise-Martin decision has totally impacted them, where they're no longer citing people, they're not, no longer able to do that. So when you're asking about what can you do to help, first of all, I don't know the numbers exact, I'm just going to shoot a figure out here, and I think it's, we probably do about 35,000 to 40,000 calls for service a year for all the officers. And probably about 10% of that, if not a greater number, are all transient-related issues. So patrols going out there on the calls, a lot of them are not crimes, and a lot of the homeless issues are not crimes, they're more nuisance-type things that we can't impact. I think, first of all, number one is, you do have just one Troy.
Right.
If we had two Troyes, then you'd have double bang for your buck. So this past year, and seeing the amount of, that's one of the things we really wanted to do, is abate aside, is to show how much he's working, how much he's impacting these different things, and the bang for the buck that we are actually getting for him. When he goes out on a location, he's by himself. We can't pull a patrol officer, because most of the time they're responding to the other 40,000 or 35,000 calls for service. So you can't just pull somebody and say, "Hey, Troy, go deal with this right now." He's going out in these situations a lot of times by himself, and a lot of times he's waiting for another officer, depending on the impact. So that's the biggest thing, is I think if we're looking to really combat, and we're addressing, this is one of the major issues in Uba City, then we have to put more resources towards that, whether it's overtime or whether it's getting another officer into that position. That, for me, it would be huge. Yeah, he is only working here part hours, he's not here after night. And yeah, things do, you know, patrol at nighttime, they're answering nighttime patrol calls, they're not out there actively doing the same things you do in the daytime. If we had that, that'd be wonderful. So that's huge for us. And then I know that you guys have been talking about different ordinances and stuff, and that's what we're exploring right now. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. We know there's Rosevilles, Rocklands, and other agencies that have had great success, West Sacramento, Vacaville, that have done this and done different programs, whether it's a shopping cart-type thing, but we just can't put an ordinance out there and not have the ability to enforce it, because it makes it look like we're just throwing all these laws out there and not the ability. So it's a combination of two. It's getting the enforcement, the ordinance, getting the business people to work with us, the neighborhood people, the residents not to be afraid to call us if they're going through your trash at night and stuff like that. Yeah, maybe we won't get somebody out there right away, maybe something's going on that's more important or more, needs an officer out there at that particular time, but documentation for us is huge as well. So we know the same areas we're getting hit every Tuesday, you know, when garbage night is on the north side of town, or Wednesday, whenever it happens to be. So residents, businesses, stop trying to be the nice guy all the time and giving them the little jobs for an hour or so, because they're going to keep coming back for that job an hour a week and for that sandwich or whatever it is. Another one of these guys, I don't think you're going to get the same quality, but I think if we got something that would work up. I hope that addressed your...
That helped. It's, you know, we definitely got something special that's going on here, and... And I really do appreciate everything that PD does. It's, I just also realize how stressed the resources are. And so looking to where we go to that next level, and it sounds like you're saying it's a combination, but one of the keys is an additional resource officer that can be dedicated because every officer that I've had dealings with has been top-notch, follow-through, dealing with things. I can just talk from my personal experience, and I'm not retail, I'm a professional office. And if I'm dealing with it as a professional office, then I can only imagine what restaurants and retail deal with because it was a substance abuse type individual that was just recently in my office. And so I think the other two takeaways would be very simple to make sure the public is aware, like I said earlier, don't be over compassionate. We have resources and need to be directed to the resources because we're enabling them. And a second, I think it came in pretty valuable with our PD and Officer Kosky was surveillance cameras at your business, help. Because we was able to pull right up, pull the picture up, and I had it in the officer's hands and sight of two minutes of them arriving at my office and they got it to Officer Kosky. And he was a known person. So it, it started filling in all the blanks there. So I think we've got some education with our businesses and we need to partner with all of our districts, the DBA and just everything so people know what we need to do to help to work together to make your job a little easier and to make your whole department, Chief, even more of a success than it already is. So, so thank you.
And I do want to also mention that, you know, we didn't have the, I think the Sheriff's Department has done an outstanding job with Sheriff Barnes and their local person. Because now we're able to work, you know, in partnership. They're, they're, with those new housing that's becoming available, we are able to make an impact on the Boise decision where we have to have so many homeless homes or beds available for them. So I think a shout-out goes to them as well. And I think you can see that if you go down Second Street by Whittaker Hall in that area.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're all working together. So absolutely, thank you.
That's definitely the name of the game, is that, Troy? I have one more thing. I know you want to get out of here. I've been, I've been there before, so I- I, I'd just be interested in your impression. I mean, you took the job on about a year ago. Is there anything that you've learned or experienced in that year that you thought, that you, that you weren't aware of, that kind of any aha moments regarding homelessness and our, our approach to it? From what is your, what is your personal opinion on, on that?
I think the biggest takeaway for me is that I'm offering these things and why they can't accept them. What, what is going on that they can't accept that, that outreach to help them get off the streets? I don't know if it's a fact that they've been there for so long and, and they don't think it's going to work. I, I'm not sure. But it's them just not taking it. Because I, like I said, at every contact that I do, I make sure that I provide that outreach as part of the Boise decision. I don't want it to just be on enforcement. They just don't take it.
And then they flat out say no?
Yeah.
All right, all right.
They, yeah, I don't have an addiction problem.
And so then we follow up that with, you know, I, I feel for the businesses as well, but also the folks who live. You know, Shanghai Ban comes to mind immediately. I mean, that's their folks' home, the whole story, right? They work hard, they try to pay their mortgage and then they have somebody victimizing them every night when they're just minding their own business. That has got to be maddening. And it definitely, in their world, we're not doing anything, right? Because they, we are, but I can understand what their point is, you know? And have you had, I mean, it could be the mental illness or maybe the priority, I suppose, would be the, the mental illness and then probably the other addictions. But have you had a conversation with them, say, hey, you know, you're, yeah, you're homeless, but do you really have to use the city as a toilet when you have options? Do you really have to use this, our sidewalks as a, as a trash can? Because, you know, if, if we had some public, I'm not going to say what, what the word is, but support, I mean, to me, it's, there's this wall there and they're creating their own bad weather by not respecting our businesses and our residents.
That is actually the biggest thing that I, I do is I try to educate them that that, the way that they disrespect other people's property like that is the biggest thing that people lose their empathy for them. I carry all this stuff, but now the main thing that I use are trash bags. I actually, I hand out trash bags and I will make them clean up their mess before they leave. And again, I try to talk to them about you need to keep yourself clean. I understand that when they find things, they may not know how they're going to use that. They know that they're, they could probably use it or trade it. That's why they have so many things. But then when they're done with it, they just leave it. And that's what I'm trying to educate them on. You can't just leave this here. You got to, there's dumpsters all over the city. And, you know, the urination and defecation is, is something that is obviously a normal function. And a lot of businesses, especially with COVID now, they don't want them in their store. So they, they, I think they've lost maybe some of their dignity or their respect and they just do whatever they got to do.
All right, well, I won't belabor the point. It sounds like you're experiencing exactly what my question and concern was. It'd be nice to get them to do their part so we can actually come together and help, you know, but I can understand why people don't want to. They just get frustrated. So thank you very much for all you do, Chief, for the rest of the PD. We really appreciate it. We see the difference you make every day and we'll get there. But thank you so much for everything, Troy.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Through the mayor, I just wanted to add that this month is Homeless Prevention Month. And in that, so it's very timely that we have this presentation today. And also within the Salvation Army is hosting, they host an annual award, they call the Spirit Award. And the Homeless Consortium is receiving that award this year. And so when we get to, I would request that the council recognize the work and a certificate perhaps to the consortium and including Troy because he's part of that, our PD, including them in that acknowledgement and some sort of certificate of acknowledging the work from the council. Because it is in with, it, it doesn't seem monumental, but Troy has worked along with other officers in the city and with Homeless Consortium very closely. And the HART team, if the HART team was full function, I think you would have a lot more perhaps of support to help you with that defiance by these individuals. But I'm asking for a certificate of recognition for the work that's been done by the Homeless Consortium and including our PD with them.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.